I want to thank you all for coming to the work session of the City of South Fulton. At this time, I would ask for the roll call.
Mayor Williamville Edwards.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Mark Baker. Councilmember Catherine Rouse.
Present.
Councilmember Carmen Letha Gunn.
Present.
Councilmember Helen Zee Willis.
Present.
Councilmember Naim McGillyard.
Present.
Councilmember Rosie Jackson. And councilmember Philippe. Mr. Mayor, you have a floor.
Okay, Mr. Clerk, are we ready for the presentation ongoing?
Yes, sir, I do believe we are. We've got James Hammond recording as requested by the city council at our last meeting. And of course, we have Michelle Marie to give the presentation.
Well, good afternoon, Mayor and Council. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon. Good evening.
I'm extremely excited tonight with today. I have been waiting to have this moment, to have a discussion with you all to gear you and equip you to make the best and sound decisions for zoning. So if I can, I want to first, to introduce myself. If you look, I am Michelle Marie, the interim director for Community Development Services. Tonight's discussion will be geared more so towards a presentation. And in the latter part, it will allow for me to ask more direct questions in the end. So if there's any questions, just take note, and then we'll come back in the end and ask more direct questions, okay?
Okay.
So we are familiar with what the city officials are, of course. Each elected official has appointed someone to the City Planning and Zoning Board of Appeals boards. You will see that each individual is representing a district. And of course, that's by charter. They are required to have a recommendation by council. So council has appointed these boards. The city manager, of course, is Mr. Ollie Donald. And then the department of the planning division of community development services will be myself, Brianna Ranch, and then Dana Gray as well, in the audience as well. Those individuals will be responsible for writing your staff reports. And so we have these meetings that I want to speak on, that they attend and present the items to these boards. Okay, so let's get started. Okay, so the first thing we're going to discuss are the true city boundaries. A lot of times, we as individuals or we as city representatives, we see the city of South Fulton as seven separate boundaries. Where in fact, they are not seven separate boundaries. They are in fact, one boundary. So it makes great sense to make sure that when you're making decisions on zoning matters, you're deciding not on your individual district, but you're deciding upon the city as a whole. Okay?
All right.
So my desire tonight is to make sure we are drawing these outward and then bringing them inward. Which means, I want to tell you about planning on the state level to bring you into what we do here, to make it more simplified. So we have the Georgia Department of Community Affairs, DCA. DCA is the agency who review our comprehensive plan. They are the responsible party to make sure that we are in compliance as it involves community development services for our community. They are the ones that kind of set our marching orders. So a lot of the times, things that we're doing in our department or in the divisional planning and zoning, we report that over to community services, excuse me, community affairs. So RETA. RETA is Georgia Regional Transportation Authority. That is where we have had DRIs. I'm sure most of you have heard of DRI, Development of Regional Impact. That's where development may come in. And a municipality, maybe ours or a split municipality, where the development could be of a certain size. Because it's so large, it could cause an impact to the surrounding community. We've had a number of those recently. I think since we started as a community, we've had five that have happened within our area that our department do attend these meetings and wake me and tell how these impacts could weigh in on the city of South Fulton. So RETA, they administer those reviews. G9, as you're familiar with, they are the responsible parties for the development and maintenance of state and federal highways. And then the Land Use Commission. I don't know great detail about them, but I'm really excited to tell you about them. They offer us so many different avenues for planning that I agree would be advantageous for us to take that on. So when I get to that, I'll give you greater detail. Okay. So, planning is, planning is not what you will think at times. Because some people think planning and zoning is the same thing. It's not. Planning is long range, and I'll speak more in depth on zoning, but zoning is short range. And so planning gives you the future of what a community necessarily is. So planning is just that. It's a 20-year focus. It tells you where you see your community in 20 years. It's not something that you're necessarily going to deal with on a day-to-day basis, but you're going to take whatever you're seeing during day-to-day and transition that into a planning document. That planning document could be a comprehensive plan. It could be a master plan. It could be a redevelopment plan. It could be a transportation plan. It could be anything that's identifying what planning or what your goals are within the next five years or so. Okay? Okay, so who are planners? Planners are just that. We are individuals who take everything that you're seeing, you would like to see in this community, and we're enforcing it on a day-to-day basis. Which means, when applicants are coming in the door for applications, we're ensuring that whatever you have adopted inside of that comprehensive plan or that zoning resolution is being enforced with their request. So, long-range planning. Comprehensive plan. As I mentioned to you before, a comprehensive plan is going to be a document that's geared towards what your vision is for the next 20 years. The state of Georgia does require that we update this plan every five years. We have a 2035 comprehensive plan for Fulton County that we are utilizing today. And the way that works is that because Fulton County's 2035 plan includes a very large majority of the community that we are at South Fulton, that plan then allows us to use it. We are in communication with the state to understand our next steps on that. We'll discuss that in a later date. The ARC, as I mentioned, I'm extremely excited about talking about the ARC. So the ARC is an agency that allows for us to receive funding and governmental support, for example. When it comes to governmental support, let's just say there's an area where we need some planning assistance, where you may want to have planners who are thinking outside of the box, that are a little different than the planners we have on staff. You may want to have it so that they can come in, gather stakeholders, and we all sit around the table, tell our issues here, or concerns that we may have. And then they'll give us an idea as to how we could implement the ideas you may have. They kind of serve very similar as to how a consultant will serve us, but they're free of charge when it comes to that. However, the LCI, which is the Livable Service Initiative, that plan is an awesome endeavor for us. If we were to tackle the LCI, it allows for you to receive funding. When I say funding, it's a matching fund. Which means, if we're asking for $100,000, we must match it by 20%, which is $20,000, where they'll provide the $80,000 to finish. So in the past, I believe it was 2004, Fulton County partnered with College Park for an LCI on Old National. And because that plan is still within our boundaries, we can ask for that plan to be, I guess, relived and have an opportunity to go after that funding again. It does support that same endeavor inside the 2035 Fulton County Comprehensive Plan. Old National is the one and only community that was mentioned inside of the Fulton County Comprehensive Plan as a redevelopment endeavor. Okay?
Awesome.
Okay, so there are a number of LCIs in the area that have received funding, and I'll just give a few examples. Sorry, I want to touch on one in particular. The first one is the, I believe they came before you all at the last council meeting. There was a trail grant that they received with the ARC, and we were recognizing that, or we'll be recognizing that. So just to let you know, funding is available for endeavors that we may have. So, that was planning. Now we're going to go into what is zoning. Zoning is more, is more direct into what we're doing today. Planning is more long-range, just your ideas of what you desire to have in the next 20 years, as I mentioned. Zoning is what we're using on a day-to-day action meeting. An applicant comes to the door, may want to know what are their current zonings, what may they have as a use today, and should there be a reason for them not to desire to have their current use? They will come before you in a rezoning, which I will touch on in just a second. So zoning. Home rule authority. Georgia has the home rule authority, which means, we have the authority, once we have adopted certain regulations, we have the authority to enforce them. Which means, the state doesn't do it for us, we as a local municipality do it for us. But you must adopt that first. Which is why I believe 17002 states that you're using Fulton County's ordinances and rules, because that's something we're required to do in order to enforce any zoning actions. So your zoning resolution and your subdivision regulations, those are the documents that we're using when it comes to considering zoning requests. When an applicant is coming into the door, they're asking for a change in their zoning. When they're asking for a change in their zoning, we're pulling the zoning resolution. That zoning resolution is currently Fulton County's. But we're pulling that zoning resolution, we're seeing what the current zoning is, and ensuring and qualifying them for the next zoning, should they desire to go into another. We do tell them that they can go for a request. We then tell them whether or not it will be supported for their comprehensive plan. If it's not supported, we will let them know that if they continue to make the request that come before you, but that's at their own will. We will tell them if the comprehensive plan is supported, and when likely that does help them when they're here requesting a zoning for you. So, a spot zoning. Spot zoning is where, it's just that. It's one zoning that's surrounded by other similar zonings that it sits along by itself. A good example of spot zoning would be if there's a piece of property that is industrial, but it's all zoned or all surrounded by residential. So we don't recommend that, because you want to have like zonings, likenesses together. So when you're seeing your staff reports, you're going to see where we're saying what the surrounding zonings are. The reason we're doing that is to share with you that this use will not be in conflict with the others. If you're seeing that there's a multitude of different zonings, that's where your concern should be. Why are we having a rezoning where it's not coinciding with the other zoning? That is usually the question that comes along when you're seeing a multiple listing zoning. So, future land use amendment. Anytime there's a rezoning, we must question, and we being staff, must question whether there should be a land use amendment change. So the comprehensive plan, though, is a huge document. It tells a 20-year focus, but it also identifies what the particular land uses should be for the next 20 years. And so, land use amendments are when the rezoning changes, so may the land use classification. So you may have to, you'll see your staff reports, I don't know if you have any in front of you, but your staff report will say, there are no land use amendments necessary. That means that the comprehensive plan is for a rezoning. So these are all good points to keep up with when you're reviewing the package. Use permit. So, there is a number of uses that are not permitted or restricted, but they require, and strongly they require, because they must come before this board's approval, when it comes to the use being allowed. A good example of that could be intertenne, location. They must request to you to have that location there. And there's a number of uses that will go through that process, that is an application process, just as with zoning, modifications, the list goes on. Modifications are just that. Modifications are when a rezoning has taken place. Typically, typically, you're going to see that when it was Fulton County, because Fulton County rezoned properties, and they listed out a number of conditions that they wanted to see on this rezoning. So they're coming to the city of South Fulton now to ask for those modifications to be considered based on the changes within those conditions. So the conditions were placed on by Fulton County, you're basically being requested to consider making a change. The zoning doesn't change necessarily, but the conditions will. A variance. A variance is heard about zoning board appeals, but a variance necessarily is when there's certain land use restrictions on a property, or certain regulations for a piece of property, how far the building should sit back in what is called a set path, how wide the buffer should be, or how large the sign should be, the number of signs that a user should have. All of those are regulated within our zoning resolution. And so, when they're coming before the zoning board of appeals, their request takes sort of been that. Number of parking spaces, that can be a variance as well. If you're required to have 120 parking spaces, but you're asking to only have 80, that will be a variance. Now, zoning board appeals hears variances, but so does variant council. Variant council hears concurrent variances, which means that in conjunction with a rezoning, you may also have a variance. And when you have those together, that means your decision for zoning may affect the variance, or the variance may affect the rezoning. Either way, the applications are received at the same time, considered at the same time. A text amendment is just that. It's the amendment of the text, and that text is going to be your zoning resolution. Your zoning resolution, once we have officially adopted our own as a city, we can have a text amendment where we're going in and making edits, because we see a need and change based on the number of rezonings we have seen, based on the number of requests that the applicants have made, or even staff may come and say, we're noticing something's going on with this zoning resolution that may not be where the city of South Fulton is zoning. So let's make a recommendation for a change, and of course, you can consider that and recommend, excuse me, make a decision on denial or approval. Okay. So zoning. Zoning districts. So, as I mentioned to you, a zoning district is individual parcels that have zonings where the uses are identified. It allows for us to understand where the boundaries are for uses. Usually, you'll find that in the zoning map, the red zonings will be more so of the commercial uses. Gray or blue will be industrial. So it's easier for you to see the zoning map, once you kind of get an idea of those colors, you can kind of drill in and see how the differences are. You'll see green space will be just that, it's green. So when you're seeing the zoning map, it gives you a more, a grander idea of how we see our city as it pertains to zoning. So I know in the last few meetings, you all have asked that we give you a listing of what the zonings are. I might add to you that you have a manual that we provided to you in this book, that gives you more than what I'm speaking of. It goes into greater detail on definitions, and it gives you the zoning classes, it gives you everything you would need to use as a tool away from the training tonight. You can use that as it moves forward, and we will have that online for the public, so that the public will be able to have this as well. So they'll be educated on what's zoning and planning as well. As I mentioned to you before, zoning boards. We have a zoning board of appeals, the planning commission, and mayor council. The zoning board of appeals is quasi-judicial. They're just as courts. They make the decision that strictly stays with them, however, it can be appealed in a higher court. They do not report to you, which means that once they make a decision, they do not have to have that decision recommended and brought to you. That is their final decision, but it can be appealed in a superior court. Baker, as I mentioned before, a number of variances, primary, secondary, and building code variances. Planning commission, as I mentioned to you before, rezoning, use permit, concurrent variances, and text amendments. Council hears the same thing of that, but they hear modifications, where the planning commission doesn't hear modifications. Modifications come directly to you first. Okay? Right. Okay, so, here is the part where we speak very in detail on how there have been some mistakes made in zoning, that I want to kind of raise an eyebrow to you all, so that you can get an idea on how we can protect ourselves. When it comes to rezoning, we need to kind of be, just be careful with decisions. Consider all components. So when it comes to regulatory taking and physical taking, it's just that. These are takings, and governments have found that they extend a number of lawsuits for coming to these decisions. Regulatory taking is just that, is when we have regulated so heavy that a land use has been restricted from a property owner. So they found that they have lost the value in their property, because we have created such regulations that it prevents them from utilizing their property. A great example of that was Pennsylvania Coal Company versus Mann, where the government created a regulation that restricted the use of coal, when this property was already utilized in their business as coal. So they were, government basically was found to be at fault for that. So we just need to be, and I guess, being in line of what's at fault or could be at fault when your decisions are being made. Just think a little bit more ahead. It's always great to call legal or to understand what could be at fault with our decisions. Physical taking, it's just that. It is a physical taking, where Nolan versus California, I think it's Coastal Commission. During this time, the Nolan family wanted to have a home that was larger than their current home. So they demolished their smaller home, going after a permit to have a home that was double in size. Well, the government felt that they wanted to keep the view of the ocean, so they restricted it with conditions. They were then found at fault yet again for making decisions that were not for the greater good, but were for individual goods. Imminent domain. Imminent domain, we have the options of taking land legally, but we must be wise in knowing that it must serve a greater good. And when it serves a greater good, you must also compensate the owner properly. So a greater good, for example, could be construction of a highway. We know that there's a greater need for a highway. So we're going to say that a property would want to not have their property sold, but you can have it taken from them by paying them compensation, rightful compensation, which means with the current value of it, and then have that property taken to where we're going for the greater good, which would be a highway. Spot zoning, I spoke on that earlier. NIMBY. So NIMBY stands for not in my backyard, which means there's a number of uses. And that document that I mentioned to you earlier has exactly more greater detail as to what NIMBY is. But NIMBY speaks on, there are certain uses that you may not want to have in your backyard, a land use, or a warehouse, or something that could be an issue for you. So what you would do, as far as, not you as government, but as a resident, because usually, these residents that have this concern, residents are usually in opposition when these rezonings are taking place. They're coming up and telling you why they do not believe this would be of a great opportunity for the city as a whole, mainly because of the detriment that they caused to them as a property owner. Religious land use and institutionalized persons acts of 2000, we call that ARUPA. ARUPA is where government cannot restrict land uses from religious institutes or institutionalized persons, which means jails, which means churches. You have to be very mindful that there's a certain law that protects them, to where you must consider them just as you would consider anyone else. Okay. So important considerations. When you're dealing with rezonings, modifications, use permits, and text amendment consideration, think about the entire community. Think about how you're protecting other properties from potential negative consequences. When you're denying something, I'm just going to give an example. If you're denying a rezoning from industrial, because it's immediately adjacent to residential, you're protecting those residents. So your use, your reasoning is usually because it's protecting something from being, I guess, invaded upon or changed. Protecting the value of the property by permitting the most appropriate land uses, and minimizing potential negative impact, as I mentioned before. You're controlling the location and the negative impact of nuisances, and providing adequate public services. Variances, just kind of drill down to make it simple. Anytime you're making a change to a variance, just make sure that you're considering the fact that it should be in harmony to what's currently going on now. If you keep that in mind when you're making decisions as far as harmony, that makes it so that your decisions are always going to be supported. It's also great for me to make sure I recommend or let you know when it comes to variances, there could be a home where you're setting a precedent. You want to make sure when you're considering items, that you're making sure you're following suit each time, because otherwise, you could be questioned on decisions. Okay? Okay. So I wanted to make sure, you know, one of our last council meetings, we had a discussion on how we were notifying the public. So I wanted to make sure I informed you all and confirmed to you all that we are in fact informing the public. Signs are posted on all sites. If a property sits on a corner, that means it has two signs. So we're definitely notifying them by sign on the actual physical portion of this property. We are notifying the legal organ at least a minimum of 15 days, no more than 45 days to each meeting. Each applicant is required to have a public participation plan, which means they're going to have to submit to us how they plan to involve the public, to inform them of their changes. We also provide that in your rezoning applications and things that are coming before you, so that you're seeing that they had these meetings and what the outcomes of those meetings were. CZIM. So CZIM, I want you all to understand that CZIM, you received an email from you probably last week, right? So CZIM is a community zoning information meeting. So when an applicant comes in the door, they provide the applications to us as staff. We review it, we make sure that everything is provided and ready to go. Once they have been confirmed and ready to move forward, we have a community zoning information meeting, where applicants are invited to come in and have a one-on-one with developers. Whatever their initiatives are, there's a one-on-one session that we host at city hall, and we allow for those questions to be answered. The word, word I read, there is one coming up on Thursday, for all the public to come back to attend. And we, it will be at city hall, I believe, at 6:00 or 6:30.
20:00.
6:00. Awesome. So please attend. So the community zoning information meeting is not something you've heard yet. That means it has not come before you in a packet, it has not been something that staff has reviewed, staff has not taken anything other than the application and made sure that it's in compliance and is ready to move forward. Meaning, you have not seen it yet, it's not ready for your consideration, and consideration does not mean that it's not ready for you to have, it means that it's not time for you to have it before you would fast. Okay? All right. So, let's go through the process as to how the application works. So the first item in green is a pre-application meeting. So John Doe comes in and wants to rezon his property from residential to commercial. We schedule a pre-application meeting that is required, which means, no one can go before you all, before they come as staff, to understand what are the endeavors of the city of South Fulton, so that they can understand how to move forward. In that meeting, we do let them know what the comprehensive plan says, what the zoning resolution says, and if they are still wanting to move forward outside of whether it's in compliance with where we're going, that's by their choice. Most of the time, staff will say, we will not recommend approval here, because blah, blah, blah. Or if they say, we will recommend approval because the comprehensive plan does support. So once that pre-application meeting takes place, it goes through a number of different avenues. It does have, I'm going to focus only in yellow right now, because these other, the informations are extremely important. So once the application has been received, we've reviewed it, it's ready to go into the process for us to review it as staff. We begin having a CZIM meeting, but we do not review it enough to where a staff report is including it. Once we begin, after the staff reports, the applicant is now having his own meeting outside of us. So now that's a second meeting they had with the public. And once they've had that meeting, they then move over to your planning commission, or DVA. If it goes to DVA, stops in DVA. But if it goes to planning commission, it moves on to you all next. So if you look at that for rezoning, your rezoning has a pre-application meeting, a CZIM meeting, a public involvement meeting that's held by the applicant, a planning commission meeting, and a mayor council meeting. That is five meetings that is being had on this rezoning. So the city of South Fulton planning department is very thorough when it comes to reviewing, rezoning, modifications, you name it. So how does recommendations work? And I want to kind of give you an idea of how this goes. We as staff provide recommendations to everything that goes before a board. And it's just that, it's a recommendation. What we're doing is saying, we have reviewed this, it meets X, Y, and Z criteria, we believe that it should move forward, or we believe it should not move forward because of X reason. So that's just a recommendation, but we hope that you will consider our recommendation, because staff has considered all the documents that you have adopted when it considers that recommendation. So the recommendations go as far as decision-making. As you'll see in the zoning board of appeals, the zoning board of appeals decision-making has one recommendation that comes directly from staff, and the mayor council has three recommendations, excuse me, two recommendations and a decision. So the only item that would not have more than two recommendations for a council would be a modification. Of course, they have one modification, will have one recommendation from council. Mr. Stevens, staff. Okay. Ethical discussions. So.
Can we go back to that last charter vote before we do this thing?
Sure.
I'm sorry.
No, we're gonna wait till the end.
You have a question? No, no, I just. You have a right to my vote, would you go back? You have this? Yes, yes.
Okay, okay. So ethical discussion. Here's where we're gonna be careful and stay out of trouble, right? So here's where we're gonna make decisions that are sound and justifiable. So I would love for you to take these tips and consider those when making such decisions. It goes in grander detail inside of your manual that I have included tonight. Suggested ethics standards. So, making any disclosure on record at public meetings, there's appearance of impropriety. If I'm not mistaken, at the last meeting, one of the council members mentioned that he has done head business with one of the applicants, so he's removed himself from a vote. That is ethical. That means that you have decided to not make a vote, because it could be perceived as a conflict. Okay, so be very mindful of that, as next bullet will mention. Do not participate if you, your spouse, children, or parent has a direct interest in a project. Avoid individual meetings with developers regarding zoning matters. So, if the applicant has come in the door and he's submitting an application to us, and we know that this item is going for the board, try to, no, not try, avoid having meetings, because that would mean that it could give the impression that you are for something or against something as a body instead of individual. You don't wanna do that, just stay away as much as possible. Ask other commission members if there are any conflicts or any records of where there could be conflicts. Just have an discussion with them. Hey, this could be a conflict, what do you think? Just ask for advice. It does help if you share that, they'll probably wait there and tell you whether they believe there's a conflict of interest. So very briefly, I want to discuss them all, as I mentioned in the manuals and grander detail, but just be advised that we give advance notice for all our meetings. By law, we must give fifteen days, because at least two weeks, we are giving the public an idea of what we're planning to do. So that the public knows that it's on record. We provide information to our legal organ, we also provide information on our website. The applicant is required by a quarter-mile radius to notify adjacent properties. We are required to make sure that properties are having signs on site. So there is an abundance of avenues that we're taking regarding public notification. So staff reports are made available online, well, rephrase that, it will be made available online. As you know, we have a new website for this new brand city, and we are working on adding that information in, so that we're having it more informed public. All participants are given the opportunity to testify and present evidence to an unviced panel, which means that applicants can come up and say they're for or against an item. So the hearing takes place in a controlled environment that allows all parties to testify or present evidence without fear or intimidation or retaliation. Without fear of intimidation or retaliation. And I say that again, because I think it's good for us to note that when we're coming to meetings that are of planning commission and the DVA, I don't want the public to feel that there's some intimidation there. So they should be mindful when we're attending those meetings, especially if it's not on before you all in future. Okay. So all items are open for public record. Meaning your minutes, your votes, your statements, everything is open for public record. So when it's time for us to make decisions as pertains to rezoning, at times, I'm gonna be a little candid on this statement. There are gonna be times where you're gonna be forced to say no or deny something. Be careful in your statements, because those are items that can be used against us. So be very careful. The public interest, we are here for the public interest. Our goal is, I'm sure you are aware, government, we're here mainly for the public. Remember who our clients are? That's very important, because your clients, some people may think that clients, as far as how government sees it, government may see your clients being just residents, that's actually incorrect. When it comes to clients, your clients are not just residents, they're business owners. So when we're making decisions, we have to think about economic development and the impression it gives when it comes to the development of this community in regards to economic development. Okay, so now that concludes my presentation, and I am open for any questions.
Thank you so much for that part of the presentation.
Thank you, sir.
And any questions, I'll acknowledge.
What is your recommendation for attending the zoning, the planning and zoning board meetings? Is your recommendation that if it's South Fulton, how's it going to go to attend?
Okay. So, in past numbers, that's where I've worked. It lets officials have never attended those meetings. Again, it gives a conflict, it gives the impression of conflicts. There are times where you're gonna wanna say something, it's on record at that point. And then when it's going before you as a board, there could be a conflict there, or it could be the presence of, again, that intimidation, you just never know. My recommendation would be, because you all have aides or legal, I forget the title, legal specialists, if you want them present for the sake of those meetings, that would be my recommendation. That will give you an idea to whether you report this information back to the union. Don't wanna give them any, you know, you know, extra meetings to attend, but that to me would be an idea if you wanted to have. Now, what we will do, I've spoken with the planning team, we will begin having minutes for these meetings attached to your recommendations. So when you're seeing recommendations from us, you're also seeing minutes. So even if you're not present, you're knowing what has taken place in these meetings.
All right, well. Um, will you all consider the future of taking these meetings?
That's a financial question that.
Are they typically taking other municipalities?
Thank you. Ms. Brown.
I follow a question. For the community zoning information meetings, which are informational, what is your stance on that in terms of attendance? Would you recommend not attending, or what's your preference?
Any meetings that still is something that you will be making a vote on, I would recommend not attending.
Okay.
Ms. Jackson.
Going back to planning, you said that the two thousand thirty-five comprehensive plan had not been changed yet. You're gonna meet with the state? Okay, we had asked about the comprehensive plan several times, and you were saying today that you're gonna get with the state and you'll get back with us at a later date.
Correct.
So I guess my question is, what is that later date?
I believe the city manager and I are working on that, so we will have information for you soon.
Do you want me to expand on that? Yeah, I can tell by your face you want more than that.
Yeah, 'cause we keep getting that later date.
Mr. Manager, would you go ahead?
So we have been in contact with, it's not on. So we've been in contact with the state, and they have given us a preliminary response, but they still have some work to do to be able to respond to us. We were expecting to have a follow-up this week. We're still kinda in the middle of the week, and we hope to have it this week. I'd say it'd be safer to say that at some point next week, they will respond to us. We'll be able to reply accordingly and then follow up with council. So we believe within the next two weeks, we'll have an answer for you. But of course, we can't, you know, govern the state's response.
But basically, what you're saying is nothing really will happen with Old National because it's already done, or?
No, 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 that's not what I said. I said that because the past Old National had an actual redevelopment plan, necessarily we have the LCI project, that that could be an opportunity for us to revisit that plan, should we desire to do that. The comprehensive plan does support Old National having a redevelopment plan. So what happens is when we're going after funding, this is why having a comprehensive plan is so awesome and great. When we're having an opportunity to go after funding, we must show that we've adopted a plan that's identifying projects that we want to go after. So when those funding opportunities come up, we're able to have a better chance of receiving that funding. We've already adopted a plan that says that Old National is a major concern for redevelopment, so it helps.
Ms. Gilley, go ahead.
All right. Are there any funds available for any other districts?
Oh, it would be an opportunity for any district, but we would just need to wait. We could not go into multiple projects at one time. When you go in as a city, you go in for one project at a time. I mean, as an application, we don't necessarily go in to include two or three different applications for LCI. We're competing amongst ourselves in that list. So what we do is we find the more advantageous project that we can go into and say we'll receive an opportunity, just like a grant would be. Where we know that this need would be, I guess, a greater possibility. So we'll find that where that area will exist. And I'm gonna be honest, Old National is that area for us, to where it would need a lot of concerns and attention. So if we were to go after a project, that's just a recommendation, that's all that was there right now.
Oh, I really wasn't focusing on the LCI.
Okay.
I was really thinking about those areas that have really been underdeveloped.
Okay.
But I guess those would be great.
So, no, okay, so when I was excited about Atlanta Regional Commission, it's because they have so many different opportunities for us as a government. And because we are a brand-new, awesome city, they're going to be more willing to allow for us to receive a lot of their time and attention, because we're needing their guidance right now. And so one of the projects that they offer is community choices awards, which is where you're not really receiving a project that requires funding. It just, it means we're going against other communities competing on a need. So when you come to undeveloped land, you could be asking for an opportunity to understand how we're gonna perform with developing that, to get ahead of the development. So that's an opportunity there too.
Roosevelt Highway is connected, well, it's Main Street, basically. And it goes through several downtown areas for other municipalities. What's the possibility of, when you talk about redevelopment, that we go after the downtown grant or Main Street grants for the Roosevelt area that is in the city of South Fulton?
Okay, so, I'm gonna word this as best as I can. Because there's several municipalities, that could be an issue. Because you're in and out, in and out, whoever that funding source is going to be, they're gonna more likely ask you to partner with those communities. And if you're wanting to partner with communities, that helps. But if you're not wanting to, that could be something that could be an issue for you. Because as you know Roosevelt Highway, you never know where you're in or out. And that's considerably a long length of space between our boundaries and next. If I'm not mistaken, once you're in our boundaries, you run into Fairburn. You're back in our boundaries, you're in East City. You're out of our boundaries, you're now in College Park, East Point. So you'll get several municipalities along that stretch.
Well, they have the marks, so that's not an issue to determine what municipality we're in. They have done, the Department of Transit, I mean, Food and Transportation have done an excellent job with putting markers. So when you're out of College Park, when you're out of City of South Fulton, you know when you're in College Park. When you're out of College Park, you know when you're in East Point. When you're out of City of South Fulton, you know when you're in East City, because there are markers. So that's not an issue.
Well, that wasn't the point I was making. The point that I'm making is when you're going after funding, you need to make sure that other municipalities are on board with you. It's not really about the boundaries. This is the point I was making, that because the boundaries are so in and out, that you're dealing with multiple municipalities at once. So that's the point that I'm making, is that you need to have partnership before you go into requesting that funding.
For Main Street grant.
But you can, I'm sorry, you can go outside of partnering with communities, but I'm just telling you what would be an opportunity to have it received, if you have partnership first. Sorry.
Ms. Gray.
I was just gonna add to Councilman Lewis's point, that one of the things we learned, I can't remember which GMA conference. Tell me the conferences. But the Main Street grant, some grants are limited to certain population size. And I believe the Main Street grants are limited to fifty thousand or less, or twenty-five thousand. Something that we're way above. But I had a couple of questions. One, with the comp plan, what happens if the plan is altered or if it's not, like you have to do an update every five years? Does that affect funding, ability to get funds? Like, what are the consequences of not having it updated?
Correct. So the comprehensive plan, QLG stands for qualified local government. So when you're asking for funding, the first thing these agencies are looking for to determine if you're a qualified local government. That means that you're more eligible for funding than someone who doesn't have that status. So when you have your comprehensive plan, it helps to put you ahead of the curve, because what happens is that when other municipalities are going after it, they have their QLG. If we don't, if we don't have ours, then we won't be considering the funding for those options.
So, for example, because I know, I think, we haven't really gotten into it, but I have a sense that some people want to dramatically change our comprehensive plan, some people just wanna tweak our comprehensive plan. But if we dramatically change it, and the DCA doesn't approve it, then that affects our QLG.
I can't speak on that. What I can say is that once we have a definite date on where we're moving forward, because that's one of the questions that I'm having with the state right now, is how we move forward with the two thousand thirty-five plan. So until that time, I can't speak on greater detail on the changes that could be made.
And I'm not, so these next few questions are about the zoning code that we have now, which is Fulton County. I'm assuming, but we're still under that, because we haven't adopted the zoning code. What is the current buffer between industrial and residential, like what is that?
I think that is only one hundred, but I'm hoping I need to check, probably just one hundred.
It's a hundred. And then, if we wanted to make changes to that or other things, that's a resolution change and not a comprehensive?
That's right, that would serve as the tax amendment that I mentioned, to the zoning resolution, correct.
When might we do our own zoning reservation at a time like that?
So I would've had a grander date, but we've kinda changed some things. We were working with our past legal office, reviewing our current plan, and they were working on that. But now I'm going to have to have a conversation to figure out where we want to start. So I don't have a necessary answer for that, because we're working on it, and now we're kind of on pause for now. So just give us a little bit more time. We're working on getting some dates, just don't have it right now.
The, we've got enough stuff to do too. But, but no, the... It's, I may be, I may be wrong, but it's my limited understanding of Fulton County zoning code, right, that after the planning commission makes a recommendation, then it's appealed to the zoning board of appeals, and then the county commissioners can overturn that ruling, but we don't have that in our... So once the zoning board of appeals makes their ruling, it's done, they would have to appeal it outside of us to Fulton.
So you're seeing the zoning resolution for Fulton County. If you can just imagine, it'd be the same for us, but we're saying the commission is really mayor and council. So just as Fulton County's zoning resolution says that the DVA stops with the DVA, it's the same for us. And then recommendations come from the planning commission to mayor and council. So it's the same exact way, because we've adopted to use their way. And in most municipalities, it is that same exact way.
And then, how many planners do we have now?
Currently, we have two.
And for a city of our size, our population, is there a standard, a national standard, that's recommended for ten thousand people, or do you feel like two is?
I've never heard of a standard. I believe the city manager's working on the plan, so I don't know.
Do you feel that that's enough, do you need more help? Okay, I'm sorry. Let me ask it in a different way. Does not, does not having more staff, does it just slow down the approval process?
I will say that being the fifth largest city for the state of Georgia, it can be weight for the planners, as it would be for any of our employees. But for planners, it's only two, it can be a bit.
Ms. Gilley, all right.
Isn't there four planning positions budgeted currently?
I'm rather not.
Yeah, so there are additional positions that are budgeted within the under-community development. I would say, I think, to go to Councilmember Khalid's first question, is that, yes, we're looking at the workload, and there are some best practices, and we're exploring those. So today would be too early to give you an answer. Thanks. Secondly, in addition to considerations of how many people we have and the workload that they have, I think what we also have is realist... that they have, I think what we also have is realistic budget considerations that have to do with our existing revenue versus our expenditures. And before we add them, I think we have to look at the budget more holistically. And so as we look at that, I think the department head is being measured in her response, because she knows that there's a balance between the two that we haven't quite figured out yet.
Ms. Reed, I'd like to know, what have you seen in terms of any innovation as it relates to senior housing districts? Particularly, I'd like to know if LCI's have been used to, to address that issue. I know based on our current 2035 comp plan, we talk about the anticipated growth and need for senior housing in our city. And so I know one of our challenges is we need really the whole continuum, you know, active adult living communities to assist in living for that now. And so have you, are you aware of any innovations around that, using various funding sources that may be available?
So for the LCI, the LCI is tied, and I knew I was mentioning that, that the LCI is tied to transportation. So what happens is it takes a transportation component, and maybe so that it is coexides with main uses that are existing. For example, you'll find that mixed-use development will be awesome for an LCI, because it ties in the residential piece, the commercial piece, the transportation, all of that. It makes it so that, and a great example of that would be something like Atlantic Station, where you're having all of the, you have some single-family housing there, you have multifamily, you have commercial, you have office space. Those are LCI components, where you're taking land that may look as if it's a wooded area today, and then ten years from now, it turns into what would be like Atlantic Station. So there are opportunities where you will see single-family housing, but you won't see it where it's one hundred percent single-family housing. You'll see it where it's a mix of various uses.
And, and to that point, I think, I would hope it wouldn't be res, single-family residential, because I think we have abundance of that, but looking at that mix, so I, I think from your response, what I'm taking away, there are the possibilities, depending on how the project is proposed, and making sure you have multiple components.
That's correct, okay.
Not much room for questions, but I do have just a couple. The first one was, was the suggested ethics steps. We said avoid individually meeting with the governors regarding zoning matters. What do you advise? Should we just not, I guess, meet with them, period, or, you know, just let them know that we can't meet? Or should we just take it literally and say avoid individually, and say meet with someone present? Or how do you contend? What do you suggest, please?
So, I'm sorry.
I think what he needs to verify, or is it, you and I talked about it. I think you need to explain, he's presently having such a cry period about.
So once an application has been submitted to the city, it becomes an official record of, I guess, a document that the city has received on behalf of the applicant. At that point, once an application has been submitted, we are then held liable, or we're obligated to provide a response or rendering to this applicant. Applicants, or, excuse me, developers may come in without even having an idea as to what they're wanting to do, and just wondering, what are your visions for the community? You're not held to any standard not to sit with a developer and talk about your vision for the district, or your overall thought for the city as a whole. You're not held at that. But when it comes to an application that has received, been received in our office, that puts you in a very sticky place, where you're making a, a decision to sit with someone and having a one-on-one discussion, that could hinder the vote, where it looks as if you're having outside discussions that the panel or the public is not privy to.
What did you, go ahead.
It can get that particular applicant disqualified. Speaking good.
So they shouldn't even reach to speak to us? And should they reach to, to speak with us, is it okay to find out if it's one of those periods?
Don't care what happens. Most of the developers know what the cry period is.
Oh, yeah.
They know, alright? And if they come to you during that cry period, then it needs to be made known, okay? And they can be disclosed.
So it will be up to us to say, hey, is this considered one of those periods?
You can talk to her, say, I talked to him, too. Who's the cry period? The cry period was that fact. He, he called me, alright? And he can disclose.
Cut. Okay, the next thing would be a question regarding common rezoning issues. I think you explained what a regulatory taken was. And I just wanted to know, for example, would that fall under any ordinance that we may pass, for example, a truck ordinance? Would that be something that they're able to consider, saying, okay, now they wanna build something, and trucks can't come to the area in which they're building, given that we've just recently passed a truck ordinance? Would that be something that one would consider a regulatory taken?
So although I wish I could, I'm not, so I cannot answer that question. I do believe we have very competent, you know, councilors that can answer that question. However, what I can say is what staff has found in the last few months is that the truck ordinance has caused a bit of a hiccup for us when it comes to making recommendations. So that is the only thing that I can now speak on, is just the hiccups there. Whereas, you may wanna look at the zoning map to see if it actually partners with the truck grounds. Outside of that, I can't speak on those things.
Can I have a turn? You want? Try a little bit.
So, just to clarify, so apart from what Mrs. Reed just explained, what remaining questions did you have?
Well, would that be something that we would be subjected to, given it would be considered a regulatory taken, possibly by said builder, developer, or whatever? Given that we have an ordinance, for example, that may prohibit them from building or going forward with certain plans that would allow, or that would require the use of trucks, for example, to come and go from that, that area we're considering, so.
And you're talking about the exclusive inability to use trucks? Or are you talking about a little bit?
I'm talking about, based off what she explained, which was regulatory taken, our packet, I guess she went a little further than what the packet says, but ultimately, I believe she defined it as anything that would actually prohibit said landowner from developing something or building something that would cost them, leave them at a deficit, possibly, financially, because they're not able to build or move forward with a project, given that the city may have imposed some type of ordinance, or some, some type of withhold, that would allow them to move forward.
In that circumstance, and I haven't heard of any circumstance that you have similar to that in, in the city, so, but in that circumstance, that would be where there is someone who is already situated, and you've implemented a regulation that would eliminate their ability to do business as they had been doing. Like, for example, if you made a trucking restriction in front of a warehouse, and you said that trucks can't turn right or left, and obviously, that would cause them to have to close down, because they couldn't get trucks in or out.
And if, if they wanna build a warehouse, and we already have that in place, it wouldn't hold us liable for a regulatory take, given that we already have this ordinance in place prior to them improving this property?
Correct. That, that's something that they, they would have to take into consideration. If you're going to implement a, a business operation that's incompatible with the existing codes, then you knew that going in.
Thank you. Next, so not in my backyard, would it have to be a detriment to property owner in order to contend that, that issue?
Right, so usually, that's, that's when your resident is making that concern. When someone lists out that, hey, you're, you know, council, you're getting ready to make a decision on this landfill, and my backyard is bloodsick, that concern is usually going to be from the resident who's making that request. So usually, it is the adjacent property, usually. There has to be some, usually, nemi ties into where there's any concern that conflicts or causes some concerns to someone. Someone could use that as their route to work every day, and it may cause an issue for them. It's not adjacent to their property, but it's something that causes an issue for them.
And as far as physical takings, no, that was found at fault, based off your example that you gave?
No, it was not at fault.
It was not at fault?
No.
Okay. So he was able to actually do what he wanted to do with his property?
Right, because, well, because the, if I'm not mistaken, the case goes into grander detail, but the case basically said that because the home that was currently on the property was smaller, the government wanted to restrict it from being larger, because the government felt that they wanted to see the ocean from the, the actual location of the home, the frontage of it. So that restricted the property owner from having value of his property. That means that you have to be mindful that it has to serve a, an actual greater good with the decisions being made. It can't be based on a desire that you may individually have. It has to be towards a greater good of the community as a whole.
So when the government wanted to be able to see that, that wasn't considered a greater good for the community?
I can't speak over.
I made that. Thank you. I have one last question, I'm sorry. And this is regarding the rules of advertising and notification for the public notification. I think you, you explained that the applicants are required to submit a public participation plan. Why is it looked up to the applicant?
So we have made so that public meetings are required on our end for the CZIM meeting. We also made so that the planning commission meeting takes place, and of course, mayor and council meetings take place. The CZIM allows for the applicant to determine where he's going to be, and make it to be at an advantage, because you look at the code, the code says that it has to be so that the, the surrounding properties can reach that location and have their concerns heard. That's just the way that Fulton County has done it, we have adopted that. It's always up to any amendment and change, or should it become something that the city of South Fulton wishes to adopt as well?
And just for the record, I think that that puts us at a disadvantage, given that we're allowing an applicant to just select where he or she may wanna hold a meeting and get our public there. I mean, I think that we should actually dictate where that is, because we would know where our public can actually come and attend.
Steph has reviewed the language, and we have decided that one of the things that we will want to see amended and changing, changed in the zoning resolution, is that that, that planning participation plan must identify a meeting within that district or the adjacent district, to make it so that the residents of that particular district can be in their area. But that will be a recommendation, that will not be something that we'll make on our own.
Alright, thanks.
Ms. Jackson, you're right.
Quiet time, quiet place, quiet period.
What's the time on the quiet period?
Depends on what you give.
So, when the application comes in the door, once it's an official document received by the city of South Fulton, as an application to be heard, we're asking that you do not meet with them, because an item will come before you for your hearing.
So if they request to meet with us?
Then you will, I will ask that you defer them back to our office for any discussions that they may have, for the community development service.
Didn't they just say somehow they could be disclosed?
Let me, let me give you an example. When I was commissioner of NAC, Boxer had someone, I'm sorry. When I was commissioner of NAC, Boxer had someone who was a advocate to come in, and they tried to contact her during the cry period. She made that known publicly, and you were disclosed.
So do I need to make it known?
Yes, I mean, it's the right thing to do, if they contact you during the cry period. Yeah, the, the basic thing is this, when you're dealing with, with developers and stuff like that, it's just best to do your own, you know.
Well, I defer them to the attorney. But on two occasions, they, it was like back-to-back, they wanted to speak with, meet with me, and then they reached out to Khalid as well.
They can do that, as long as they were not within the cry period.
They were quiet, it was quiet, it was mad.
They'd tell somebody.
It was quiet, quick trip. It was quiet.
Hello?
It was quiet.
Okay, alright. Ms. Khalid, you?
I, I always, in that, in that instance.
I'm sorry, Jackson, where you finished?
I got it in the black one.
Where you, where you finished? Go ahead.
And, and that is, and in most instances, I, I just refer it back to the attorney. I try and copy the attorney one, so there's a record that it's been referred to the attorney. But, but that, that brings up, really, it was a comment I wanted to make, is that, so we have our own city now, and I think that there are some developers that have been used to things happening a certain way. And we may do things differently, and I think that it will be important that we have interdisciplinary approach across not just planning and zoning, but with our communications department, with our legal department, that, that sends a message out to developers and our citizens that we're going to be doing things a little differently. And it, I know that we, we have to be cognizant of litigation and getting into those issues, but, but I do think that it's, that it's important, from a, from a communication standpoint, that we are, that we are communicating that as a city, that will be, that we will do things differently in terms of development, and it's going to be a more inclusive process.
Mr. Bigg, come here. I'm sorry, Ms. Khalid, finish.
Okay, I think you mentioned something about, in the section about fairness exists when? Any decision meets all legal requirements, and is based on the record. I know that you gave us a tentative advice after saying that, saying that we should be careful as a council, as far as what we say on the record, because it's recorded, and it could be used later. So if there is a "ne," should we not, should we just withhold it? The details that will be for the good of the public at said time, just to let them know why? Because it may be on the record technically, or how do you contend?
So as long as your "ne" is supported by a, a document, like a zoning resolution or a comprehensive plan, you should always mention that, because that's saying that you've already adopted the vision and the future for your city. And you're saying that you're supporting something that you've already adopted as a policymaker. Now, if it's something personally, that you personally desire not to have, that's where I would warn you, just be careful when you're mentioning things for the record. Because just as we're speaking now, someone can go back and play his rewind right now.
And, and lastly, if you have, like, for example, it was my dentist, you and I abstain. If you're for something, and that's, there may be a connection, according to this, we, it's okay to converse with our colleagues and let them know why, for them to say whether or not they think it's okay to abstain, or do you still say if you're for something to your colleagues and still abstain, and is that ethical as well?
So some governments do have, and I'm using this term as it's, as it's defined, and I believe it is, but some governments that have a weak mayor, the weak mayor usually says that, they're not following, it basically, it basically states that sometimes the mayor, they say, you know, I'm, I'm for blah, 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 but I don't have a vote. Like, sometimes they can't sometimes put on record how they feel about things. That's the same thing, where you could probably say that, you know, I'm, you know, against or for, however, blah, blah, blah. Like, that is something that has been done in the past with governments, but it doesn't mean that you can't have an opinion.
Good, thanks.
Well, since everybody's spoken twice and hasn't spoke at all, I'll take a minute.
Ms. Gons has spoken.
Oh, I don't.
Oh, Ms. Gons, she told me she didn't want to be talking. Couple things I wanna ask you, and a couple I wanna expand upon a little bit more in your presentation. One is, as it deals with the Aratropus of Savannah, Community Improvement District, as those funds come in, are you communicating with Kathleen? The grant writers come straight from your shop?
I'm not following with that project. You're talking about the one that's in this presentation, that's something that AR, you know, Aratropus receives on their own.
A hundred and sixty thousand?
Right.
That's gonna be available. Are you gonna, are you gonna handle?
No. When I said that it involves us, um, the Aratropolis applied for this funding through A R C, they received it, therefore they've determined where they're wanting their projects to be.
Oh, I misunderstood.
And we're involved by that way, but we're not receiving any grant funding.
I misunderstood.
Right.
Uh, the other thing I want to expand upon in this whole theory of home rule authority.
Mm-hmm.
Because it's been my experience that we have an obligation to give everybody a constitutional zoning.
Right.
And if we fail to give that constitutional zoning, they can petition to the state court. And at that time, the judge ends up...
So there is no property, to my knowledge, that does not have a zoning within the city of South Fulton. Um, I've never seen where a government has not had a property zone. Um, Eric's government I worked for has always identified the area of zoning, especially when it was time for annexation, when enough the county annexation requires there to be a zoning component so that when it comes into the boundaries, it automatically has a zoning. So I'm not sure as to how the state will deal with that, but I will say that for the city of South Fulton, all properties have zoning.
It's not my point.
Okay.
Um, a constitutional zoning is a constitutional zoning. Give me a classic example. Fulton County versus, um, Walmart in Cascade, uh, where we zoned that property twice and the second time with conditions. And the owner felt that, uh, that it wasn't a constitutional zoning. And he took us to state court, all the way to the Georgia Supreme Court, and he won. So I mean, it looks very big, you say home rule authority. I think there's a glitch there that will allow...
No, it, it, okay, so just like any legal case, anything that goes before consideration by court, they consider to make sure that, that each side has been considered and making sure whoever has not received just compensation or consideration is proceeding. I'm not privy to what we're discussing.
We're talking, we're talking about the same thing.
Okay, well, I was just saying, I wasn't privy to that one.
I didn't want us to even think the home rule was it, all right? There's another facet to it because the second time they came back, the judge told me personally and everybody on the board, they're going to put us in jail. So, uh, Nancy Boxer said she didn't want to be in jail with me, so we let, we changed it up. But, uh, that can happen. The other thing I want you to, 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 to kind of talk about a little bit more is this concept of con- conditions.
Okay.
Uh, talk about that a little bit more.
So when an applicant comes to you for rezoning, um, staff comes in, when you're receiving a application for staff, staff report will come in and say, here are some things we're noticing that could be a concern in this rezoning. Should you rezonate, we're recommending you provide these list of conditions to fix some of the concerns. Um, I believe if you go into your package, you'll see that, I'll go back to the, it's up here. Yeah, right there. So the very bottom up here where it's engineering and all this, our, our city does a very, again, thorough review process for applications. The engineer may come in and say, I have concerns because this is a buzz of state, uh, state water. State water is going to be a creature, lakes, anything that is water. And so he may recommend there to be an additional buffer nearby or something of that nature and that's a condition. So when you're rezoning, a list of conditions is provided from staff. Um, it is at times where you have seen where the elected officials have recommended additional conditions, but it does not mean that you should go that route because it takes a lot of time for you to make sure that we're, we're following protocol properly.
And that's the part I wanted to get, want people to hear, is that elected official, if there is a zoning, Mr. Khalid goes and feels that there need to be any traffic light. And it's adopted from us as a part of the conditions to the zoning, uh, then that's staying.
That's staying.
So I just want to make sure that, you know, we know that.
And they can come back for modifications, I mentioned.
It can, it can. Uh, the other thing is, uh, you know, on this eminent domain thing, a lot of people feel that they're going to take your property, I think you talked about a little bit, but I think it's two things we always need to keep in mind. Even if they're taking an eminent domain, we still must pay the actual cash back.
That's correct.
For that property. And the second thing is that it must be, and the most important thing is that it is, it must be for a public good.
Correct.
And, and when those two, when you have those two things, uh, you have grounds, I think, for eminent domain. Uh, the other thing we talked, we talked about was the R L U I P A.
R L U P A?
R L U P A. Uh, I found out in that, that, let's use a church for example.
Okay.
That churches come on any zoning classification they want.
That's correct.
I want everybody to know that. Go back to the church. They go anywhere they want, all right? Uh, and it may not be something that we like.
Right.
You know, unless it's a, unless there's an environmental issue or a transportation issue or something like that that would cause problems, uh, a church can just about go.
Right, and, and I want to make sure I make points that too, that institutionalized persons also includes that.
Absolutely.
So it takes them as well.
You didn't say nothing, you're using your tag. All right. Now, those are signs that we put out. Uh, we don't have any insignia or a name with a city on it, the one I saw. The zoning sign.
Yes, it is.
But the one I saw, then, I'm getting old, I'm older today, you know?
Yeah, that is your work.
And I did see it today. So you may have, I just want to bring that to your, because I saw one, I said, this doesn't have a, uh, a thing. So we talked about the quiet time, I think, I made my own.
That's good, and, um, I think you answered all my questions last Friday when we sat down with, um, the district's residents, so I do want to say thank you. And you know where my heart, my heartburn was, was the public engagement. So ladies and gentlemen, so thank you.
Thank you.
One other thing, as we talk about train, ladies and gentlemen, as we talk about train, let's be mindful of the fact that this is not specific to anybody, that this is a train and that we need to be careful, you know, what we say, uh, uh, here, because this is just all train and not specifically any zoning case.
Right, and I want to make sure I add one more time, that this information will be, if it is not currently, if not currently, will be on our website, uh, for the public. So that the public, you on our website, um, at thecityofsouthholton.g. and receive this information to download.
Okay. Well, thank you for some wonderful information.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
Hope all y'all learned something too, ladies. All right?
Thank you.
I didn't tell motion to recess.
Okay, um, I moved in recess.
I said, all right.
You do a check.
You don't have to.
Move just three recesses.
All right. Okay, okay. Probably move the second whole thing. You'll recess until seven.